Forward, but I would like to say that there are quite a few exceptions for businesses, deliveries, etc. So it's not just a blanket 10,000 pounds limit. It's really designed to eliminate or try to provide some enforceable material to eliminate large vehicles using the town of Brentwood as just a crawl street. Thank you.
The next ordinance is ordinance number 2025-13 and it's an ordinance that's amending the ethics code in the charter to include legislative updates passed by the state of Maryland for the year 2017 and 2021. I can briefly just go through those. It's quite a few. There was an update to one of the definitions quasi-government entity. Meaning an entity that is created by statute that performs a public function that is supported in a whole or in part by the state but is managed privately. The next update was 2017 related to lobbyists who become a town official employee may not participate in a case contract or other specific matter one calendar year after terminating their local lobbying registration if their previous if they previously assisted or represented another party in the matter. Next update had to do with gifts acceptance of gifts from associations engaged in representing counties and municipal corporations is prohibited. The next update was from 2021 and replaces a previous disclosure regarding confidential information. And it reads, other than in the discharge of official duties and official or former former official may not disclose or use confidential information that the official acquired by reason of the individual's public position or former public position and that is not available to the public for the economic benefit of the official employee or that of another person. Next update again from 21 legislative update, an official or employee may not retaliate against an individual or reporting or participating in an investigation of potential violation of a local ethics policy. Next update was 2017 and I apologize, the years kind of go back and forth just because of where it needs to go within the ordinance. But it reads for statements filed after January 1, 2019, the commission or the office designated by the commission may not provide public access to an individual's home address that the individual has designated as their individual's home address. Next update from 2017, if an individual's spouse is a lobbyist regulated by the town, the individual shall disclose the entity that has engaged a spouse for lobbying purposes. And next update, 2021, an interest held by a member of the individual's immediate family. If the interest was at any time during the reporting period directly or indirectly controlled by the individual. Next update, any interest held at any time during the applicable period by and then it lists the the four points. Next update, 2021, individual who is required to disclose the names of a business under this section shall disclose those any other names that the business trading as or doing business as. Next update, statements filed under this section shall include a schedule of each gift in excess of $20 in value or a series of gifts totaling $100 or more received during the reporting period from or on behalf of or directly or indirectly any one person does business with the town of Brentwood or from an association or an entity acting on behalf of an association that is engaged only in representing counties or municipal corporations. Next update, relationships with University of Maryland Medical System, state or local government or quasi-government entity and it lists those out for you. The next update, the commission or office designated by the commission shall not provide public access to information related to consideration received from and it really and it lists those organizations. And that was, that was the final update on the ethics. This has been reviewed and approved by the ethics committee and reviewed by attorney as well. And then the final ordinance is ordinance number 2025-14 and this is a ordinance that's restricting parking northbound Jackson Street between Taylor and Tilding. So it's just, it's restricting the parking to one side of the street. Currently parking on both sides impedes the the traffic being able to flow safely. And that completes the summary of the ordinance that are on the table tonight.
I'd like to make a comment if possible.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here. Brian Scratney, 40th and Volta. I wanted to comment on ordinance 2025-11, the gross vehicle weight. I just wanted to say thank you to the vice mayor for introducing this and then for the to the mayor and the council for considering it. You know, we still have a constant flow of dump trucks and cement trucks and tow trucks and tractor trailers. And today we had one of those car carriers driving down Volta Avenue. You know, it's one of those, it's a tractor trailer engine with with two levels of cars that it's pulling behind it. I mean, those things are enormous and they just I don't think belong on our residential streets. So so thank you for putting together this ordinance and for taking action to reduce the flow of this kind of traffic on our streets. I think the exemptions or exceptions make perfect sense. We of course want emergency vehicles and delivery vehicles and the things that our residents actually need and use to have access to our streets, but cutting out the rest, I think, can do wonders. So so thank you for that. And then I understand later at the council hearing, there'll be a traffic calming resolution open for discussion. So I look forward to commenting on that, too. But again, thank you all for this gross vehicle weight ordinance. I look forward to its passage.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Just one by me, mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I may have actually missed it, but did we, did the clerk receive any comments?
No, no comments.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Counsel, comments? So if there's no more comments, no public comments and no emails received for this, I would like to give a few more minutes before we pause to go into the special meeting to actually move forward with this ordinance. Larry, are we using the same Zoom link for this? We're just going to continue the meeting, correct?
Yes.
With exceptional and to go into the closed session. Oh, I think we're gonna have about 10 minutes. Do you guys want to stay in and then come back or log in and then we log back in?
I wouldn't mind a few moments to get a caffeinated carcinogenic beverage, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to stay in. We'll just
Wait for, yeah.
Be on mute.
Yeah, I'm just gonna drop off camera to grab something to drink, too.
All right. See you guys.
Thanks all. See you all at 7 for me.
Recording stopped.
All right, guys, it's 6:30.
We, we good?
Yes. All right, once again, this is a special
Recording in progress.
This is a special meeting of the mayor and town council Brentwood. Today, Tuesday, September 2, 2025, and we start in this meeting at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being held via Zoom and can be watched while the full link. I will have our town clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Lynn Harris, Jr. Councilmember Juan Alomia.
Here.
Councilmember Julia Elrod.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jerry Burgess.
Present, ready to serve.
Mayor Nusseh Damiel Lopez.
Present.
Town Administrator Shelley Dorsey.
Present.
Police Chief.
Not yet.
And then town, town treasurer, interim town treasurer, Shelley Dorsey.
Present.
Town Clerk, Lamoran, present. And lastly, Attorney De Loach.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for that. I just need, let's see, I need a motion to approve this agenda.
Well, I make a motion to approve this agenda dated of the special meeting of mayor and council dated Sept-September 2 at approximately 6:30 PM.
You need a second.
Breaking.
Excellent. Any comments, changes here? This is just for the ordinance tonight, so all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so move. Any public comments during this time? Any messages, Larry, anything?
No, nothing is coming.
Nope. All right, so I will give the floor to our town administrator Shelley Dorsey, Washington, to give us once again, for the record, the summary of this ordinance 2025-11, the gross vehicle weight.
Yes, so ordinance number 2025-11 is a ordinance establishing a gross vehicle weight limit of 10,000 pounds on town roads. There are some exceptions for emergency vehicles and and of course, we want, we don't want to impact commerce and our residents being able to get their packages. So delivery vehicles that actually have business within the town would be included in that exception.
Comments?
Yes, Councilmember Burgess, if I may.
Yes.
This is a a question for the the town administrator or the mayor or Captain Campbell, for that matter. So should we pass said ordinance? It has 30 days before it gets impacted. I mean enacted. So I'm going to optimistically say that if it does pass, what are the next steps after those 30 days? Will signage go up and how will enforcement proceed?
Good question.
So yeah, so the plan would be to put up signage. We'll probably post some information on our website as well as our social media sites, just making sure that everyone is aware that it's coming, that is happening. So it won't be a surprise when it, you know, at the end of 30 days, when it actually goes into effect. You know, obviously, we're going to pay particular interest to every entrance point into the town. Just making sure that those vehicles, we want to make sure those those vehicles over 10,000 pounds are seeing that signage before they enter onto our roads.
So a question on that signage and what resident Scratney said during the public hearing a little while ago. There appear to be some really large vehicles going through parts of the town. Are we going to have anything signage that would really draw a driver's attention such as a new portable electric sign or something like that, LED sign or I, other signage besides just a a post or something you know, on a telephone pole. Did you follow what I'm trying to say? Something that would really make sure some of these drivers will be drive by all the time and ignore the regular signs.
Right, so I have not looked into an LED sign as far as gross gross vehicle weight limit. Can certainly research it to see what's out there and see if that's a viable option. I have no idea what the cost would be on that. But we can, we can definitely research it. In terms of enforcement, we could also, those signs can also include what the fee would be if someone violates it. We could probably get that onto the signage as well. And it would be up to the police department to to enforce it, to write those tickets. I do know one was written last week over off of Volta. Driver wasn't too happy, but he tried to drive down 40th Street, halfway down 40th Street. So so there will be, there will be enforcement, but we also will pick every account to make sure that people are aware that if they violate, you know, there's a penalty for it.
And one more question on that front, and I probably should know this, but I'd like to have confirmation. Ticket writing authorities for these kind of violations in the town of Brentwood, is that restricted to the Brentwood Police Department or does this, would code have any authority to do to write such a ticket?
So officers might have to weigh in, but I know my my gut or my instinct tells me that it's a traffic violation and so it's probably the police department. Captain Campbell, if you're listening in, are you able to comment?
Yes, good evening all. It's it's a traffic infraction. So yes, it would have to be handled by the police department because code enforcement doesn't have the authority to write traffic infractions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you both very much.
Yes, no problem.
All right, if there's anyone else who would like to comment before I ask for a motion to approve this ordinance?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question slash idea to share. So sort of building off of the vice mayor's idea about, you know, very visible signs. In addition to sort of researching what those costs would be, I wonder if we might also check with some of our fellow municipalities to see if maybe they have something we could borrow or rent. And while it's new and, you know, we're building up sort of awareness that this is new, new code, new ordinance. Just use it in a temporary fashion just to kind of help raise the visibility at the start. And then once people get acclimated to it, we can maybe relinquish it back. So just a thought. Thank you.
I actually like that idea because I don't, because we're already considering LED stop signs at certain areas within the town. at certain areas within the town, and I think if we do too many LED signs flashing lights everywhere, it's gonna really take away from the beautification work that we've been doing, you know, within the town. Um, so yeah, but a temporary measure I think is a great idea. You know, maybe we do it for, you know, sixty, ninety days kind of thing, and then they go away.
Sounds good. Alright.
I'm sorry, can I speak real quick on that?
Yes.
As far as signage, um, what I'll do is I'll reach out to uh, uh, the municipalities around and see if we can possibly get a um, mobile sign board or use a mobile sign board for that purpose of um, you know, just relaying the information to the drivers that may be using, trying to use the street for passage or what have you. So I'll um, I'll try to work on that uh, on Friday when I come back.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, so um, I need a motion to approve this ordinance.
Oh, I'll make the motion, I guess. Make a motion to uh, approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven gross vehicle weight for the town of Brentwood.
Second.
Alright, any more questions, comments before I have town clerk call the roll? Here and now, so uh, Mr. Moran, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Juan Alomeo.
Yes.
Councilmember Julia Elrod.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jerry Burgess.
Yes.
And Mayor Rosita Mina Lopez.
Yes. So move. Alright, so we move to the next one, which is the ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen Ethics Code Amendments.
So ordinance two zero two five thirteen Ethics Code Amendments is uh, basically an ordinance to bring our code in compliance with Maryland standards um, to include legislative updates that occurred in two thousand seventeen and in two thousand twenty one.
And uh, mi- might I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, town administrator, uh, could you uh, just confirm or deny that the Ethics Committee and the town attorney has reviewed these proposed changes?
Yes, uh, the proposed changes have been reviewed by the Ethics uh, Committee as well as the town attorney.
Thank you so much. And I know you.
You're welcome.
In the last meeting as well, just putting it on this meeting.
No worries.
Yeah, nothing else, I will uh, uh, Mr. Moran to call the roll.
Councilmember Juan Alomeo.
Yes.
Councilmember Julia Elrod.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jerry Burgess.
Yes.
And Mayor Rosita Mina Lopez.
Yes. Thank you, this is. Great, so the next one will be ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen Jackson Street Parking Restriction.
Uh, yes, so ordinance two zero two five dash fourteen is in ordinance restricting parking on Jackson Street northbound between Taylor Street and Tilding, um, and basically what this will accomplish is it will allow parking on, only on one side of the street as opposed to two sides of the street. Um, to, you know, provide a better or safer passageway for vehicles that may be traveling in either direction at the same time.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead Vice Mayor.
Um, town administrator, um, I wonder if you have any thoughts on how, um, what, how it would be signified to the residents, whether it be a sign, a marking on the road, a curb painting, a big banner, him from tree to tree, what it, what are your thoughts on how to convey this information?
So I don't recall on that street if there's actually a curb there, so I'm not sure we could paint, so we would have to do signage, however, with all of these uh, vehicle or uh, street safety related ordinances, um, we will notify through our social media, our website, um, to get information out, um, and because we actually have quite a, a few changes that's coming up, uh, I, I may even propose just doing a little flyer that we can get on people's doors, um, just to make sure they're aware.
Yeah, that's great, thank you, thank you on all accounts.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anyone else? You're none? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Juan Alomeo.
Oh, wait, 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 one second, one second. We need a motion.
Uh-huh. See.
Alright, I'll make a quick motion. Uh, I make a motion, um, um, in support of ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen, uh, Jackson Street Parking Restrictions.
Second.
Alright, no more discussion. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Juan Alomeo.
Yes.
Councilmember Julia Elrod.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jerry Burgess.
Yes.
And Mayor Rosita Mina Lopez.
Yes. Me, any comments? Have you received any, anything, um? Larry?
No, nothing via email.
Okay, so let's see, we have any comments right here, we're still live, okay, yeah, that was smart. Okay, I guess we're gonna take another ten minutes break before we come back for our workstation, followed by a closed session. We had a busy evening tonight.
These are perfect little snack breaks though.
Right, yes.
Do we need the emotion to close this meeting or you just wanna roll in?
Uh, no, we have to close the special meeting of the mayor and council.
Okay.
I'm, I moved to close this special meeting of the mayor and town council at six forty seven P M on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, see you back in ten minutes.
Recording stopped.